May we call on the Honorable Anne Kay Hofer of the 2nd District of Sambuanga, Cibugay, to lead today's prayer.
Lord God Almighty, who created the universe and all that is beautiful, help us maintain our sense of balance. Help us to appreciate the beauty in others, not just in a beauty contest, but also in daily life, because beauty permeates all of your creation. At the same time, help us to balance it off with what is in the Bible, particularly 1 Samuel, Chapter 16, Verse 7, which goes, "But the Lord said to Samuel, 'Don't judge by appearance or height; people judge by outward appearance; but the Lord looks at the heart.'" Help us thus, Lord, to keep our hearts pure and pleasing in your sight. In our everyday work, help us to strive to do good. In our given calling, instill in us a resolve to uphold the truth, as we call to mind the words of the poet John Keats, "Beauty is truth; truth, beauty." Let our lives, then, Lord, be filled with the beauty of sincerity and the truth that will balance us, so that when you look into our hearts, you will see only the beautiful desire to glorify and praise you faithfully and forever. Amen.
Amen. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we defer the calling of the roll.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve Journal Number 62 of January 25, 2017.
Is there any objection? Cheer here's none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now proceed with the reference of business and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the titles of the bills and resolutions on first reading, as well as communications and committee reports.
There is a motion, hearing no objection. Cheer here's none, the motion is approved. The Secretary General is likewise directed to read the bills and resolutions on first reading for referral to the appropriate committees.
Reference of business, bills on first reading. House Bill Number 4798, imposing a logging ban in Cagayan de Oro City by Representative Rodriguez M.
To the Committee on Natural Resources.
House Bill Number 4799, declaring the city of Cagayan de Oro a mining pre-zone by Representative Rodriguez M.
Natural Resources.
House Bill Number 4800, providing for pre-public higher education by Representative Ilago.
Higher and technical education.
House Bill Number 4801, amending certain provisions of Republic Act Number 10176 by Representative Sabiliano.
Forestation.
House Bill Number 4802, granting successional rights of illegitimate biological child to unadapted child by Representative Gatsalyan.
Population and family relations.
House Bill Number 4803, declaring the coconut levy assets as a trust fund by Representative Agli P. Bilyar.
Agriculture.
House Bill Number 4804, restructuring mandate and repocussing the role of NIA towards the development of more new irrigation systems by Representative Agli P. Bilyar. House Bill 4805, mandating the Department of Agriculture to promote urban agricultural development in the country's metropolitan areas to address food security by Representative Agli P. Bilyar. House Bill 4806, institutionalizing the Philippine Abaca Industry Development Program by Representative Agli P. Bilyar. House Bill 4807, declaring October 27 of every year a special non-working holiday in the province of Saranggadi by Representative Pakiau.
Revision of laws.
House Bill 4808, mandating the inclusion of black islands in Silago, Southern Leyte, into the Niapas by Representative Mercado.
Natural resources.
House Bill 4809, instituting a canning volunteer program in the Philippines by Representative Vyason.
National defense.
House Bill 4810, regulating the use, sale, and distribution of electronic nicotine delivery systems by Representative Vyason.
Health.
House Bill 4811, granting automatic pill health coverage for all orphans, abandoned, and abused minors, out-of-school youths, and street children by Representative Tan A.
Health.
House Bill 4812, institutionalizing the Bamboo Development Program by Representative Agli P. Bilyar.
Agriculture.
House Bill 4813, establishing rehabilitation centers for children and youth with disabilities nationwide by Representative Herrera D.
Committee on Welfare of Children.
Resolutions, House Resolution 705, directing the appropriate committees to inquire on the continuing deterioration of Laguna Lake by Representative Vyason.
Rules.
House Bill, House Resolution 706, directing the committee on higher and technical education and other appropriate committees to inquire on the conditions, rights, and privileges of the 11 missing student cadets undergoing shipboard training, who failed meetings to the maritime assistance offered by MB Starlight Atlantic.
Rules.
Manalo. House Resolution 707, directing the committee on transportation and other appropriate committees to inquire on the sinking of MB Starlight Atlantic by Representative Manalo.
Rules.
House Resolution 709, directing the committee in ecology and other appropriate committees to inquire on the status of the initiatives being implemented by the Laguna Lake Development Authority and the government in general relative to the rehabilitation of Laguna Lake being represented by Neta Belmonte et al. House Resolution 710, directing the proper house committee to inquire on the charging of parking fees on malls and other similar establishments, including government facilities, by Representative Pineda Belmonte R. and et al.
Rules.
House Resolution 711, conveying the sincerest condolences and deepest empathy of the house to the family of former Manila mayor, former Manila congressman, and former chairman of the PSC, Himaliano Mel C. Lopez Jr. by Representative Romero.
Rules.
House Resolution 712, inquiring on the alleged failure of the small-town lottery operations of the PCSO in generating its projected income by Representative Manalo.
Rules.
House Resolution 713, commending and congratulating the Adventist University of the Philippines on its centennial anniversary of being a school that trains for service and prepares for eternity in the Philippines by Representative Abayon.
Rules.
House Resolution 714, urging the committee of Metro Manila Development Authority to investigate the DNR order to close down the Payatas Dam site by Representative Batucabe.
Rules.
House Resolution 715, urging the committee on games and amusements to investigate the alleged irregularities in the conduct of small-town lottery operations of PCSO that reportedly resulted in the loss of billions of revenues of the national government and the supposed exploitation of small-town lottery operations into fronts for illegal gambling in the country by Representatives Batucabe, Belarion, Bravo A.
To the Committee on Rules.
Committee Reports. Report Number 58 to 57 by the Committees on Aquaculture and Pizzerias and Resources and Appropriation on House Bill Number 4848 and 4850 to 4862.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report Number 72 by the Committee on Public Order and Safety on House Bill Number 4863.
To the Committee on Rules. Yes, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend session for a few minutes.
Session is suspended. Session is resumed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the change of referral of the following measures. House Bill Numbers 388, 1520, and 4206, authorizing amending a Solo Parents Welfare Act of 2000 from the Committee on Population and Family Relations to the Committee on Revision of Laws. House Bill Number 2324, extending the prescriptive period for the rectification of simulated birth from the Committee on Revision of Laws to the Committee on Social Services. House Bill Number 179, institutionalizing an act regulating public solicitations from the Committee on Revision of Laws to the Committee on Social Services. House Bill Numbers 2977 and 3651, providing for a comprehensive nuclear regulatory framework creating for the purpose the Philippine Nuclear Regulatory Commission from the Committee on Government Reorganization to the Committees on Government Reorganization and Science and Technology. House Bill Numbers 25 and 4369, providing for a comprehensive nuclear regulatory framework creating for the purpose the Philippine Regulatory Commission from the Committees on Government Reorganization and Energy to the Committees on Government Reorganization and Science and Technology. House Bill Number 1691, providing for a comprehensive nuclear regulatory framework creating for the purpose the Philippine Nuclear Regulatory Commission from the Committee on Energy to the Committees on Government Reorganization and Science and Technology. And last, House Bill Number 2732, providing for a comprehensive nuclear regulatory framework creating for the purpose the Philippine Nuclear Regulatory Commission from the Committee on Science and Technology to the Committee on Government Reorganization and Science and Technology.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration of House Resolution 713 and request the Secretary General to read the title.
The Secretary General is to be directed.
House Resolution Number 713, a resolution commending and congratulating the Adventist University of the Philippines on its centennial anniversary of being a school that trains for service and prepares for eternity in the Philippines.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution 713.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, may we acknowledge the guests of Representative Rose Marie Arenas. These are former Congresswoman of the 3rd District of Pangasinan, Maria Rachel Arenas, Chairperson of MTRCB, Annie Enriquez Heron, Vice President, Public Services International Asia Pacific, and Dr. Dario June Lapada Jr., President, Cancer Partilis.
May we ask our visitors to stand up. Welcome to the House of Representatives, the guests of the Honorable Rose Marie Baby, the ever-beautiful Arenas. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, may we also recognize or acknowledge the guest of Magdalo Partilis Representative, Honorable Gary Alejano. These are Dr. Maximino de Chávez Ilag, Philippine Women's University Politics and Governance Professor, and the Philippine Women's University Politics and Governance Class.
The guests of the Honorable Congressman Gary Alejano, Magandang hapon po, welcome to the House of Representatives.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we, that the lady from the 3rd District... Mr. Speaker, with the, today being a Monday and pursuant to our rules, I move that we open the privilege hour.
In accordance with Section 22, Majority Leader, we open the privilege hour.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that the lady from the 3rd District of Pangasinan, Honorable Rose Marie Baby Arenas, be recognized to avail of the privilege hour.
The Honorable Representative Rose Marie Baby Arenas of the 3rd District of Pangasinan is recognized, and everybody is advised to sit down and listen.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I love you, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, dear colleagues. I rise on a matter of personal and collective privilege. There are important issues confronting an estimated 10 million overseas Filipino workers. Mr. Speaker, I seldom take the floor, because I choose to express my legislative advocacies through committee work, but not this time, Mr. Speaker. I believe that addressing the difficult challenges confronting our overseas workers is every Filipinos concern, and that the protection of their rights and well-being must be everyone's business, particularly our people in the government. Republic Act Number 7157, otherwise known as the Philippine Foreign Service Act of 1991, gives mandate to Department of Foreign Affairs to implement the three pillars of Philippine foreign policies, namely, preservation and enhancement of national security, promotion and attainment of economic security, protection of the rights and promotion of the welfare and interests of Filipino overseas workers. Napakahalaga na po ang mga bagay na ito, naharapin. Sa pagtatalagan ng sapat na pamamahala, na sa gayon ay hindi tayo magkagulo at magsisihan. Pagdating ng oras kung kailan, huli na ang lahat, at hindi na natin magawang isalba ang ating mga OFWs na nasa gitna ng kamatayan o krisis. One death is too many, Mr. Speaker. Last Tuesday, on January 24, 2017, this humble representation took the initiative of organizing a special briefing for fellow legislators on the state of affairs of our OFWs deployed in over 100 countries. In particular, we wanted to know the situation of our workers in the Middle East, especially in Kuwait, where almost 90% of them are employed as domestic helpers. That day, Mr. Speaker, none of the resource persons from the Philippine Overseas Employment Administration, or POEA, and the Overseas Workers Welfare Administration, or OWA, had any clue about the execution that was to be carried out the next day. That was the day before the execution of OFW Jakatiya Pawa. Jakatiya was a 44-year-old mother of two, who was widowed when her husband was shot to death in Ipil, Sambuanga. She was also the sister of two men in uniform, a retired police officer and a Philippine Air Force colonel. She graduated college, and yet she humbly but bravely faced the odds to work as a domestic helper in Kuwait. As you can see, Jakatiya did not come to the most marginalize, and yet was powerless to fight the system that accused her of a crime she did not commit, a crime they could not prove was her doing. She suffered injustice, loneliness, and fear in a Kuwait prison for the last seven years of her short life. Is there a fate worse than death that awaits other victims of lesser means than Jakatiya who were forced to work under the most oppressive conditions? Yes, there is, and that is to live daily through the hell of constant unspeakable pain and fear from abuse just to have a job. Mr. Speaker, the fact is, there are countries where our workers do not receive protection. Such is the case in Kuwait, where there are no laws to protect our domestic workers, where there are no warrants spared, just like Jakatiya. This is sad. According to the POEA, 1.5 million Filipinos leave the Philippines every year. Of those that have left, 30% or nearly 3 million are deployed in the Middle East. In 2016, Saudi Arabia topped the countries of destination with 183,517, followed by Kuwait with 63,167 OFWs. Of the top 10 most in-demand skills, household services ranked first in the deployment. This is a job predominantly occupied by women. According to a report by the Department of Foreign Affairs in 2015, there was a total of 207,655 Filipinos in Kuwait, of which 198,432 are temporary migrants, and 9,170 are irregular or undocumented. Records show that 84% of OFWs employed in Kuwait are household workers. While the Philippines has signed the Memorandum Understanding on Labor Cooperation in 2012, domestic workers are not governed by Kuwaiti labor law. In fact, there are reported and documented cases of contract violations, malt treatment, poor working and living conditions, underpayment or non-payment of salaries, non-payment of overtime, holiday pay, vacation leave, sick leave, other benefits, prolonged working hours, and shortened rest hours, and health and medical problems, sexual, physical, and verbal abuse. On top of these outrageous cases, Mr. Speaker, records show that in Kuwait alone, there were 251 cases of rape and 556 cases of sexually related abuses. Mr. Speaker, we must not condone this deabolical treatment of our OFWs, of our women. We must not be silent as such heinous crimes are condoned by countries like Kuwait. The government must act now. One death is too many, Mr. Speaker. Therefore, let us plug the outflows now with the following measures. We must ban the deployment of OFWs in Kuwait, and let such bans stay until we are in a position to guarantee their full protection of rights, well-being of our poor OFWs. We must direct all diplomatic and consular offices all over the world to render a periodic report on updated inventory and situation of all Filipinos in their respective countries. Mr. Speaker, in Taiwan, two cases of death penalty were commuted to life imprisonment because of diligent and timely intervention of the Manila Economic Cultural Office. I believe that embassy should have a section referred to as Attention to Nationals, where a duty staff officer is assigned, including unaccessible ambassador, devoted to Filipinos in distress if we are to effectively protect them. Mr. Speaker, how many of our consular officers are prepared to visit OFWs in prison? This humble representation has visited twice our OFWs in jail, and the experience was heartwarming. I felt so bad, and I cried. I mention this to emphasize the urgency of these measures and recommendations. I also propose to ensure the strict implementation of reportorial requirements of agencies on welfare incidents. As soon as possible, create an inter-agency task force, identify and eliminate all sorts of... identify and eliminate all sorts of vulnerabilities and exploitations, starting with abolition of recruitment fees and other related costs paid by the workers. Develop a model bilateral, multilateral labor agreement that will promote fair and ethical recruitment. Implement mandatory designation of welfare officers in Philippine licensed recruitment agencies. Carry out district enforcement of penalties against airing employers and agency. Impose mandatory pre-employment orientation seminar for domestic workers. Mr. Speaker, to fast-track the approval of House Bill Number 543, and creating the Department of Overseas Workers and all other seminal bills aimed at protecting OFWs, let us strengthen our position by including in the agenda of the coming ASEAN Interparliamentary Assembly, or AIPA, the resolution to promote fair and ethical recruitment in bilateral and multilateral labor agreements, and expanding the current mutual recognition arrangement. With this urgent call, Mr. Speaker, we hope this will be the last. We hope there will be no more victims, no more deaths, no more orphans, no more tears. Mr. Speaker, dear colleagues, I watched the news until the wee hours in the morning, when the whole country anticipated the Miss Universe budget. At 1:00 in the morning, President Rodrigo III reiterated that he will serve the interest of the country with respect to EDA. At about 2:00 in the morning, video footage of OFWs sleeping in the streets of Jeddah were shown in the news. Why do we treat our OFWs unfairly? These people remit more than a trillion pesos annually, equal to 1/3 of the 2017 national budget. Without these remittances, our country will suffer serious social, economic setback. They are not only victims, and other countries are victims of our own too. My dear colleagues, I thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you for your support, and to you, Mr. Speaker, I thank you. I submit. Marami pong salamat.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the gentleman from Ako Bicol Partilist, the Honorable Rodel Batokabe, for his interpolation.
The Honorable Congressman Rodel, the great debater Batokabe, is recognized.
Thank you, the great protector, Deputy Speaker Kimbo. Will the gentle lady from Pangasinan yield to a few questions?
Yes, I will, Mr. Speaker.
Yes. First of all, let me commend the Honorable Arenas for taking up the cadals of our oppressed OFWs. Indeed, it's about time that we take again a look at the plight of our OFWs and not to react after an unfortunate incident like what happened to Mrs. Pawa. Mr. Speaker, may I know what committee do you head in the 17th Congress? The committee po?
I'm Vice Chair of the OFW.
Vice Chair of OFW?
And Chairman of the IPRD.
The IPRD? What is the IPRD? Interparliamentary Relations? Now, as Chairman of the IPRD and Vice Chair of OFW, are you furnished a list of OFWs who are in distress, particularly OFWs who are convicted and who were convicted in foreign courts?
Thank you, my esteemed colleague Batokabe. I think that is what I wanted to do since the very start of the liberation and the formation of the Committee of Department of OFWs. But the DFA and the Department of the POEA and the OWA has never submitted a copy that I've been asking for, inventory of those in prison, inventory of those who are in detro, and inventory of those Filipinos in their respective countries. But I think the diplomats are busy with other things.
So in other words, what you are saying here, Mr. Speaker, is that despite your request as Chair of IPRD and as Vice Chair of OFW and as Representative of Pangasinan, you were never furnished any inventory of our OFWs in distress, and I surmise that includes also the list of our OFWs in detro. Am I right, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, yes, my dear colleague, yes.
And that is precisely the reason why you are urging this Congress to require this agency to report periodically regarding these OFWs in distress. Tama po ba?
Yes.
And that is also the reason why you want us to be appraised of the plight of our Ws, so we can react accordingly and not to react after, let's say, somebody has been executed, like what happened to the Pawa case.
My dear colleague, that is what I want all of us here in Congress to address. Dahil po nakapasok ako sa preso, nakita ko po kung gaano kahirap at kasama ang kanilang sitwasyon. Kaya po siguro, we can ask the Speaker with your leadership to allow us to visit, to see actually, because I don't think any ambassador would want to enter a jail the way I did. And malaki pong difference, dahil po 'yung death penalty recently sa Taiwan, ay napakumut po namin sa imprisonment langang with our presence there. So importante po 'yung inyong suggestion. Can you help us?
Dahil po, kung bibigyan po tayo ng listahan ng ating mga kababayan, lalong-lalo na 'yung mga nasa detro, tayo po ay pwedeng magtulungan sa pamumuno po ninyo, gaya po ng pamumuno ng inyong komite, o bilang Vice Chair ng Komiteo na OFW, tayo po ay pwedeng may magagawa rin para hindi matuloy ang pagpatao ng kamatayan. Tama po ba yun?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
At hindi na lang po tayo, pagkatapos na lang, ay magtuturuan na lang tayo at magsisihan kung sino ang may kasalanan. Tama po ba?
Yes po.
Okay. With that, Mr. Speaker, I do commend the gentle lady from Pangasinan, and I do hope that we start taking action now by first taking into serious consideration the recommendation she outlined in her privileged speech. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Honorable Batokabe. Maybe you can help us ban, the temporary ban of sending OFWs in Kuwait. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, my dear colleagues.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the gentleman from AX OFW, the Honorable Aniseto Jan Bertis III, for his interpolation.
The Honorable Bertis is recognized.
Good afternoon, Mr. Speaker. Thank you so much, Mr. Majority Leader. Do the good gentlewoman from the 3rd District of Pangasinan willing to interpolate by this representation, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, unang-unang po sa lahat ay nagpapasalamat ako mula sa aming puso bilang tinatawan ng OFW dahil sa pagmamahal at malasakit po ng ating mahal na representante from 3rd District of Pangasinan. Mr. Speaker, in your opinion, are there any prevailing factors in Kuwait that make our worker more vulnerable to abuse than in other countries?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Dahil po, I myself, I filed a case against them 6 years ago in the Philippines because the crime was committed in the Philippines, but up to now po, DFA has not done anything regarding my complaint. And when I was so emotional, thank you, thank you very much, my dear colleague. When I was so emotional, the 3rd Secretary of the Kuwait Embassy shouted at me, and I would like to file a resolution to declare him personal ungrata. Because po, not even one problem that we filed here in Manila was addressed by the Department of Foreign Affairs.
Thank you po. I know for a fact that because of the new medical and visa system, the cost of deployment is higher by almost 10,000 pesos per workers going to Kuwait. Would you think that this is a factor, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, my dear colleague. Yan po ang isang nagpapasalamat din po ako sa inyo, Congressman Bertis, for your courage and your dedication. Yan po ang isang problema kung bakit kailangan silang dumaan sa kamay ng mga foreign doctors or nurses for their medical checkup when we have able doctors, hospitals that can do it, besides na napakalaki po ng cost. At alam po ninyo, I don't think that they even choose the right people. It's only the one they want to choose. Marami pong salamat, Congressman Bertis. Sana po ipagpatuloy ninyo inyong advocacy regarding this matter.
Salamat po, Mr. Speaker, Madam Honorable Baby Arenas. Sa palaganyo po ba bilang Chairman ng Interparliamentary and Diplomatic Relations po, palaganyo po ba malaki ang pagkukulang ng ating Department of Foreign Affairs at ang ating DOH kung bakit 'tong mga klase ng cartel at ang mga buitre na nagpapahirap sa mga OFW, lalong-lalo na ang cartel ng mga medical clinics, ay pinapayagan?
My dear colleague, napakatama po ng sinabi ninyo. Yan po ang complaint ng maraming ating constituent. Salamat po, nabigyan po ninyo ng pansin, at sana namang po tayo ay magka-isa. Let us demand from the Department of Foreign Affairs the answers to our questions and to our complaints. And maybe we can ask Secretary Yasay to answer all of that because I've been sending messages, and up to now I don't get any answers, including po ang POEA at ang OWA, at including din po ang Bureau of Internal Revenue kung nagbabayad sila ng correct taxes.
Salamat po, Mr. Speaker. Gusto ko lamang pabalikan. Dahil ako po mismo bilang representante ng OFW, alam ko po na ang kakulangan ng DFA, lalong-lalo na sa pumanaw natin or namatay nating kasamahan na si Jakatiya Pawa. At alam namang po ng foreign peer, gabi pa lamang ay bibitain na siya. Hindi man lang po pinarating sa pamilya na siya ay bibitain nung araw na yun. At alam rin po, Mr. Speaker, na nung December, nung nakaran December 2016, nagbigay ng kanyang credentials ang bagong Ambassador ng Kuwait sa ating presidente. Bakit nga po hindi man lang to inilagay sa folder or sa report ng DFA kung ilang daan tulad nga po ng sinasabi ng ating mahal na representante from 3rd District of Pangasinan, ilang daan ang mga namamaltrato or ang mga nasa shelter ngayon, at dalawa po ang nasa detro. Bakit kinakailangan pa sila nga? Kailangan pang mamatay bago pa lamang po iparating kay presidente. Ito po isang, sa tingin ko, malaking pagkukulang ng DFA. Gampanan ang kanilang trabaho, at sinusuportahan ko po, Mr. Speaker, ang rekomendasyon ng ating Honorable Congresswoman Arenas ng pagpapatigil, ng pagpapadala ng mga domestic workers sa Kuwait. At ganun na rin po, ang pagbuwag ng cartel na matagal na nagpapahirap sa ating mga OFW na ang pangalan po ay Wilson Q8, na hinuhututan ang ating mga OFW at kumikita na mahigit 10 million barap-bawat araw na pinaghahatian lang ng wawalong kompanya. At kadamay na rin po rito ang mga tao ng imbahada, at ganun na rin po ang mga opisyal ng ating Department of Health. Mulip po, Mr. Speaker, mula sa aming puso at milyong OFW, nagpapasalamat po kami at meron po tayong tinatawan na isang Baby Arenas na nagkamamalasakit sa ating mga OFW. Maraming-maraming salamat po, Mr. Speaker, and Madam Congresswoman Baby Arenas.
Marami pong salamat, Mr. Speaker, my dear colleague. I think with our participation, this will send a strong message to the Kuwait government how valuable are OFWs and that their dignity, life, and security are far more valuable than their pay and remittances. Marami pong salamat, Mr. Speaker. Marami pong salamat, my dear colleague Bertis. Marami pong salamat, my dear colleagues.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the gentleman from Buay Partilist, the Honorable Jose Lito Atienza, for his interpolation.
The Honorable Lito Atienza of Partilist Buay, the best-looking representative from the city of Manila, is recognized.
Thank you, coming from the best dressed and better-looking presiding officer. I take that compliment as a well-meaning one. Salamat po. Mr. Speaker, Mr. Majority Leader, thank you for the opportunity, and with the kind permission of my comadre, whom I respect in her dedicated work as a member of our Congress. With that permission, I'd like to clarify certain matters.
Marami pong salamat, my dear colleague.
Ito po bang kaso ng ating OFW na inyong dinadala rito sa aming hapag, sa ating hapag? Ay, kilala niyong personal?
Hindi po. Hindi ko rin po alam na merong papatayin nung araw na yun. Pero nagkarumpo kami ng meeting with OFWs and POEA, OWA, hindi rin po nila alam.
Sa tingin po ba ng ating gagalang-galang na Congresswoman, ay talagang may kasalanan o meron pong duda na walang kasalanan?
Meron pong duda, my dear colleague.
Sa kabila po ng pagdu-duda ng marami, siya po'y napipintong kitlin ang buhay.
Opo.
And that's the very reason why you are appealing that the Philippine government, hopefully the President Nolas takes action to save the life of our country. Babae po ba siya, lalo?
Babae po.
The life of our country, woman.
Babae po.
Opo. Naniniwala kayong meron namang katwiran na makiusap tayo upang hindi siya kitlin at hindi siya padala sa gas chamber or bitain or dalis sa Paris squad?
Mr. Speaker, gagalang-galang po na Kong Atienza. Marami pong salamat. Dahil po, alam ko, walang nakipagugnayan, kaya po natuloy 'yung pagkitil sa kanyang buhay. Dahil nakita ko po sa Taiwan, siguro po pwede tayong dalawa makipag-meeting sa kanila. Ay, dahil po sa closed communication, ay nakumut po sa life imprisonment and death sentence. Nung isang Pilipina din po na OFW nababae rin po.
Sa inyong paniniwala, kung sakali nga hindi mapigil ang execution ng ating kababayan, ay malaking kawalan sa kanyang karapatan, mabuhay, sa kanyang pamilya na umaasa, at sa ating bansa na mismo, na tayo po'y isang bansang Kristiano, na naniniwala tayong hindi basta-basta dapat pinapatay ang siluman.
Opo, totoo po yun, my esteemed colleague. Yun nga po ang nakakalungkot na hindi lang po lang naman dignity of life and security are far more valuable than their pay and remittances. Kasi po, pagalis nila dito sa ating bansa, iniiwan nila ang kanilang may bahay, iniiwan ang anak na maliliit, iniiwan ang magulang na may sakit. Hindi po nila alam kung pagbalik nila ay nagjadyampah o sila naman ay hindi naman nakalagay sa isang ataon na lamang. Malaki po ang risk to umalis sila ng bansa. Kaya po sana, ang ating mga diplomats all over the world, we must instruct them and tell them to do their job, hindi lang po mamasyal at magbigay ng party at magattend ng parties.
Alam po ninyo, Mr. Speaker... 'yung kaso po nung ating kababayan inexecute noong nakaraang linggo, ay hawig na hawig si sinasabi ninyo na sumusumpa ang mga nakakakilala sa kanya na hindi niya ginawa 'yung pagkaka-aku sa kanya, na pinatay niya 'yung kanyang alaga. Ang sabi nga ng mga kaibigan niya at nakakakilala sa kanya, pati na 'yung kapatid niya, na kabilang po sa ating hugbunsan na tahan. Ang sabi nga nila, hindi magagawa noong babaeng yun na pumatay ng kanyang batang inalagaan sa simula't simula.
Opo.
Alam niyo yun?
Totoo yun.
So magkahawig po ito?
Opo.
Sa makatuwid kung ito'y matutuloy ang execution nitong ating kababayan, ay isa na namang pagpatay, pagkitil, pagbawi ng buhay ng may buhay dun sa mga bansang nagpapairal ng death penalty. Na sa tingin po ng marami, hindi makatarungan, hindi tama, hindi dapat ginawa.
Opo. Kaya nga po sana, Mr. Speaker, my esteemed colleague from Manila, tulungan po ninyo tayo na talagang saya sa'tin ito. Puntahan kung kailangan man dahil po nakita ko po na kung tayo ay pupunta doon at makikipag-usap, na bibigyan po sila na malaking chance na mabuhay pa. Nakikita naman po ng gobyerno nila kung paano tayo kadedicated. Siguro po, kung ipaglalaban ninyo, mababawasan po magiging mga orphans, mga nanay na lumuluha, at mababawasan po abuse at mababawasan ang kamatayan ng ating mga OFWs all over the world. My esteemed colleague, Congressman Atienza.
Mrs. Speaker, I have to express the admirability of the position of our colleague. Kahanga-hanga po 'yung kanyang, kanyang pag-alala sa isang buhay na naman na maaaring makitil sa lalong madaling panahon. Samantalang, malamang ay hindi po naman talagang nagawa ng ating kababayan 'yung kanyang kasong hinaharap. So we admire the gentlewoman from Pangasinan for her efforts. But I would like to clarify with her because we will be soon, probably in the near future, be facing the same situations in the country. Ay po ba naniniwala na ang patayaw, ang parusang kamatayan ay karapat-dapat o hindi?
Salaki kita po natin, Mr. Speaker. Mahal ko pong colleague from Manila. Lalo po natin dapat pag-isipan yan dahil alam po naman natin na sa ating bansa, ang ating pakakristiano ay tinitingala nating importante sa atin ang buhay ng isang tao. Unless the justice system in our country is changed and everyone believes that the poor without a chance. Nakikisang ayaw po ko sa inyo na hindi natin dapat, isang tabi lamang. Yang panukala na yan at bigyan natin ng pansin at pag-aralan muna po natin bago tayo kumitil ng buhay ng isang tao.
Ang akin po tinutukoy, Mrs. Speaker, ay 'yung ating napipintong pag-uusap, pagtalakay dito sa ating Kongreso ng death penalty or restoration of the death penalty. Ang tanong ko po sa ating kagalang-galang na kinatawan ng Pangasinan, siya po ba naniniwala na ito'y dapat natin ibalik sapagat wala na po tayong death penalty ngayon? O naniniwala siyang hindi ito ang paraan upang harapi natin ang mga problema ng droga at ng criminalidad sa ating bansa? Sang ayaw po ba siya dun sa mga tumatayok, sa pagtatanggol ang buhay ng bawat nila lang? Na hindi solusyon ito? 'Yung patayin natin ang sinuman at patawan ang kamatayan ang sinuman sapagat baka tayo magkamali sa ating mga desisyon ng korte? Katulad po ng inyong dinadala sa awi ngayon?
My esteemed, Mr. Speaker, kagalang-galang pong colleague from Manila, ako po ay sumasang-ayon sa inyo na dapat pa itong pag-aralan na malawakan. Hindi lang po basta-basta na tayo magsasalita at kikitili ng buhay ng isang tao na hindi natin nabibigyan ng 100% na pag-aaral bago tayo magkumit ng ganyang bagay. Lalong-lalo na po nga ang sabi ko kanina na ang justice system natin ay medyo po mahirap kespelegin. Kailangan po siguro pag-aralan po nating mabuti bago natin ito man lang pag-usapan dito sa ating kamera.
So ang inyong posisyon ngayon ay pag-aralan pa natin at pagdating din besidaan?
Pag-aralan po ng talagang 100% or even 1,000%, my dear colleague from Manila.
Ang aking imomunkahi sa aking comadre, Congresswoman, kinatawan ng Pangasinan, ay sana eh, sa inyong pagmumuni-muni at pagdarasaan, ay mabigyan kayo ng kaliwanagan ng isipan na hindi kamatayan o pagpapataw ng kamatayan ang tunay na solusyon sa problema ng ating bansa. Dahil 'yung ipinakikiusap ninyo ngayon, pagdating po ng lalong madaling panahon, basta naipasa natin 'yung death penalty, hindi na tayo pwedeng makiusap mas kinakanino. Alam ba ninyo mahigit samdaan ang mga Pilipino nasa detro ngayon? Sunod-sunod po yan sa tatlong bansa, sa Middle East. Eh yan po'y mahirap na nating pakialaman o ipakiusapan ang mga kinukuulan dun pagdating ng araw na tayo ay meron na ring death penalty rito. Walang paraan at walang karapatan ang sinumang makiusap na iligtas ang buhay ni Numan kung kayo mismo ay pumapatay ng tao.
Tama po kayo, my esteemed colleague.
At siguro marahil, sa sabihin ko sa ating kaibigan, Congressista, na dito sa atin nagkaroon na tayo ng death penalty nung araw. Alam niyo yun?
Opo.
At alam niyo sa records po ng Korte Suprema, sa siyemraang kaso na inapila sa Korte Suprema, death sentences rendered in the lower courts, seven out of ten were reversed by the Supreme Court.
Opo.
In other, in other words, 'yun nangyari po si Etsegaray dahil isa siya sa mga biktima ng misdelivery of justice that is irreversible. Si Etsegaray ay pinatay sa pamamagitan po ng lethal injection. Sa dalamhati ng kanyang pamilya, dalamhati ng bansa, wala pong nagawa kundi ipatupad ang desisyon na siya ay parusahan ang kamatayan. Subalit, pagdaanong panahon na pagalaman, 'yung paglilitis si Etsegaray ay may depekto at hindi po pala tama. Eh pwede po ba ibalik pa 'yung buhay ni Etsegaray? Pagkatapos malamang defective 'yung legal procedures na nawala ng karapatan 'yung tao na railroad ang desisyon na bitay si Etsegaray? 'Yung mga ganong klase, Mr. Speaker, ang tinutukoy natin mga kadahilanan, daan-dahan tayo dito sa excitement ng restoration of the death penalty. And I'm appealing to my colleagues, let's go slow on this issue. Sabi nga ni Congresswoman Arenas, daan-dahan lang, pag-aralan natin mabuti at pag-usapan natin sapagat, una, hindi na tayo pwedeng makiusap sa anumang bansa para sa ating kababayan mas kinaalam nating sila ay biktima ng hindi makatarungan ang desisyon. Pangalawa, dito sa ating bansa mismo, katulad po ng aking binanggit, sa Korte Suprema mismo ay merong mga kaso na isinampa na binaligtad ang desisyon na kung nasunod ang lower courts at hindi nakapagapila ang mga kinukuulan, ay napatay na rin sila. So killing anyone is not a foolproof solution to a growing problem of criminality and the runaway drug problem in the country. Dahil dito sa ating bansa mismo, mangyayari po 'yung patayin ang mga walang sala dahil lamang po sa sila ay pinatawan ng isang korte, sa kakulangan nila ng paraan, makaDepensa sila ng tama. Kung kayo makakakuha ng abogadong mamahalin, talaga ikaw, makakagawa kayo ng Depensa ng Tama. Kung kayo may salating pambayad sa pulis, alam naman natin ang pulis ngayon, meron talagang diferensya. Galit na galit si Paulon Duterte na pag-aalaman niya, "Maraming kriminal sa hanay ng ating kapulisan." 'Yun po sinabi niya. Eh bakit natin bibigyan ng mas malaki pang paraan ang kapulisan na sila mismo ang nagiging problema? Tapos bibigyan pa natin ang armas para takutin, gipitin? At hinga na salapi ang walang kalaban-labang Pilipino. So I am appealing to the gentlewoman at this point. While she is appealing to us, we are appealing to her. Open up your heart, open up your mind on this issue. Hindi pa naman natin pinagdidibatiyan to. Pero sana ay maghanda-handakayo ng inyong posisyon. It is not enough to say that we have not decided yet as we are using our conscience on the matter. Because this is an issue between life and death of a person. This is an issue that will not be restored by anyone in the future. Kung mali ang desisyon, patay na ang biktima, ay wala na pong paraan upang buhayin sila. At ang utos po ng ating Panginoon, ay bibigyan natin ng pahalaga. Wag tayong papatay. At bigyan natin ng paraan, reformahin natin ang ating sistema. I hope and pray we will be together defending life when the time comes when we are discussing the issue of the death penalty in our country. Because otherwise, the appeal you're making now will be rendered an empty statement if you would support the death penalty here in our country while you appeal to the other governments whom we feel are unjustly killing our people probably to cover up for their own faults and errors and crimes ang binibigyan ng CC ay 'yung Pilipino namamasukan lang bilang isang domestic. Let us study this measure as you said and I agree with you and that should be the case to all our colleagues. Pag-aralan nating mabuti itong issue ito dahil hindi ito ang solusyon, mawawala ng paraan upang ang mga kababayan nating argabiado doon at mga kababayan natin dito maaargabiado dahilan lang sa kahirapan dahil po sa ating kapusuhan. Restoring the death penalty is a major error on the part of this Congress if we engage in it. Again, I will reiterate my respect for your position. Alam ko nagagaling sa iyong puso yan. Sana po 'yung pinanggalingan ng inyong magpapahalaga sa buhay ng ating kababayan sa Saudi Arabia ngayon. Ang siya rin mamagitan sa inyo pagtayo rito ay nagbubotohan na on the issue of the death penalty.
Marami pong salamat.
I know your intentions are very clear and very clean. I still congratulate you for your efforts. Marami salamat sa pagkakataon. Thank you, Mrs. Speaker, for the opportunity to clarify matters with my comadre, the gentlewoman from Pangasinan and a very diligent member of the 16th Congress and the 17th Congress where we both belong to. Salamat po.
Marami pong salamat, my esteemed colleague. Pag-aaralan ko po yan, pangako ko po sa inyo. Napakahalaga po ng inyong mga sinabi. Marami pong salamat. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the gentleman from the Kabayan Partilis, the Honorable Harry Roque Jr. for his interpolation.
The Honorable Harry Roque of Caban is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Majority Floor Leader. Would the lady from Pangasinan still yield to a few more points of interpolation?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Now, I heard earlier that you had filed a case against a Kuwaiti diplomatic official. Did I hear right, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
And, Mr. Speaker, if the lady will reveal, may we know exactly what rank this Kuwaiti diplomatic agent has in the Philippines?
Mr. Speaker, my dear colleague, yan po ay anim na tauna na nagfile ako sa Ambassador at Kuwait Government. Nagpadala po ako ng sulat sa ministro at sa lahat ng inka-ukulan, including D F A, OWA, P O E A. Pero po, ang malungkot hanggang ngayon ay wala pang resolusyon. At two weeks ago nga po, na nagharapan na naman po kami sa D F A, Department of Foreign Affairs, ako po ay sinigawan ang third secretary ng Depart ng Ministry Embassy of Kuwait na naging pong parang representative nila dun sa hearing. Na lalo po akong nag-alala ng kataku-tako dahil kung dito po isang lawmaker ang nasisigawan lamang sa loob ng D F A, eh talaga pong marami talaga pang nakakulong na hindi mabibigyan ng pag-asa at katarungan. Dahil po sa ating mismong bayan, ay hindi tayo mapakinggan at mabigyan ng hustisya ng Department of Foreign Affairs.
Mr. Speaker, will the lady for the record state the name of this third secretary of the Kuwaiti mission who had the temerity to shout not just at a member of this august chamber but at one of the most distinguished members of this august chamber?
Mr. Speaker, ang abogado ko po ay nagpa-file na ngayon. Hindi ko po matandaan ang aralan, pero alam ko po na we are going to file persona non grata against him for doing this not only for myself, but this is an insult sa ating bayan, lalong-lalo na po sa kababaihan. Hindi ko po maalala ang pangalan dahil dalawang linggo lang daw po atayan dito. Pero po, sobra pong hindi ko masabi ang mga kabastusan na ginagawa nila sa ating bayan.
Mr. Speaker, this is clearly a reason for alarm given that the lady is not just representing a district but is representing this august chamber in her transaction with the Department of Foreign Affairs. And that is why my next question, Mr. Speaker, is, has there been, to the knowledge of the distinguished lady from Pangasinan, a pending motion adopted by this house in support of her prayer that this Kuwaiti diplomat be declared persona non grata?
Mr. Speaker, my esteemed colleague, 'yun lang po sana ang aking prayer at hiling na dito man lang sa Pilipinas ay mabigyan sila ng parusa sa pag-abuso nila sa ating mga kapwa Pilipino. 'Yun po ay tatanungin ko ng utang na loba. Hindi lang po ako. 'Yan po ang magiging patakaran at magiging susundin ng ating gobyerno how they deal with the OFWs, Filipinos all over the world, including po this representation.
Well, Mr. Speaker, given the fact that apparently this August Chamber has not had the opportunity to speak as one institution to demand that this Kuwaiti diplomatic official be declared persona non grata at the right time, Mr. Speaker, we should refer the speech of the lady from Pangasinan to the appropriate committee so that we can speak with one voice, protect not just one of our own, but protect this August Chamber of Congress, Mr. Speaker, particularly against abusive foreigners who should know better than to disrespect a duly-elected representative of the people. But before I end, I have one more question, Mr. Speaker, and that has to do with what is known as the decking system being required by Kuwait authorities. Mr. Speaker, does the lady from Pangasinan know about this decking system as far as medical, um, medical examination of health centers are concerned?
Mr. Speaker, my dear colleague, 'yan po sana ang gusto ko pang malaman dahil po balitang-balita na po 'yan at ang natatamaan po niyan ay 'yung mas mahirap pa sa mahirap. Kaya nga po, bukas daw po si Congressman Bertis ay merong hearing regarding this. Sana po tayo lahat magattend dahil po andini ko sobrang abuso na po ito. Hindi natin po siguro dapat ito palagpasin. Dahil nga po, nakakaroon tayo ng mga Miss Universe, nakakantay tayo ng mga State Visit, nakakaroon tayo ng mga exchange of meetings. Pero po, hindi napapag-usapan ang kalagayan ng OFW. The way I've seen it for six years when I was assigned by our president in Taiwan, I've seen the loneliness, the flight, the pang-aapi, abuso towards them. Kaya nga po, hinihiling ko sa ating mga colleagues. Sana naman po, kahit isang minuto na inyong oras dito sa ating plenary, i-dedicate natin to help them because they're now all over the world. And if you see the prisons where I have been to, siguro po talagang maiiyakayo the way I did. At nung nakita naman po ng gobyerno ng mga bayan na 'yan, na ang kongresista ay pumapasok sa loob ng preso at kinakausap ang ating mga kababayan at binibigyan ng pansin, medyo po natakot sila at nabuksan po ang mga mata nila na siguro naman karapat-dapat nilang mahalin at respetohin ang mga mahihirap na Pilipino natin na OFWs all over the world. 'Yun lang po, Mr. Speaker.
Well, Mr. Speaker, this practice of decking had been declared illegal by no less than our Supreme Court. And I take it from the answer of the lady from Pangasinan and by way of confirmation as far as she knows that decking system, albeit iligang-illegal, persists in the country today.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
That again is a real cause of concern because apparently, again, a foreign government has substituted its wisdom and judgment in favor or as against a lawful decision made by the highest court of our land, the Supreme Court no less. And that is why I look forward to the hearing that the lady mentioned which will be held tomorrow if I am not mistaken.
Headed by Congressman Bertis.
Mr. Speaker, it is my firm conviction that no foreign power can breach lawful decisions of our Supreme Court because it is provided that decisions of our court form part of the laws of the land. Mr. Speaker, I have no further questions to the lady from Pangasinan. I would like, however, to commend her for her concern for the OFW. We all know that the gentle lady from Pangasinan does not have to if she does not wish to care about the welfare of our OFWs being the paragon of high society in the Philippines. But I am, I am very, very happy, Mr. Speaker, that despite her many blessings, her heart is still for our Filipino overseas contract workers. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, gentle lady from Pangasinan.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, my esteemed colleague, Harry. Thank you po. Marami pong salamat, Congressman Harry Roque. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the lady from Gabriela Partilis, the Honorable Emmy de Jesus, for her interpolation.
The Honorable Emmy de Jesus from Partilis Gabriela and from the Second District of Marikina is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. At kinagagala ko po na makapag-interpelate sa aking colleague na naninindigan para sa ating mga OFW. At alam ko, nakahanda na kayong tanong. Nakahanda naman kayong tanggapin ang aking interpolation. Una po kasama ako doon sa unang bahagi ng pinatawag ni Congresswoman Baby, Tita Baby, na consultation kaugnay ng kalagayan ng ating mga OFW. And in fact, if I'm not mistaken, Congresswoman Tita Baby Arenas, hindi po ba 'yung unang bahagi ay magandang larawan pa nga ang kanilang ibinigay? Kaugnay ng status ng ating mga manggagawa sa Kuwait?
Yes, yes, po. Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, kaya kasama ako ang sa nagulantang ng malaman ko sa same day na yon na may isang dyakatiya pawa na ang pagkakaalam pa po namin ay nakaamba na bitayin. At tinawagan ko po, nakaabot po ba sa aking kapakinatawan na ako po'y tumawag para ipatanong kung nabalitaan niyo na yon?
Opo, Mr. Speaker. In fact po, thank you for attending the meeting. Marami pong salamat, Kong Emmy. Nagulat din po ako dahil hindi alam ng PEA at ng OWA at nalaman lamang po nung kayo po ay tumawag nung same day po na yon. Marami pong salamat.
Kaya nung pong malaman ko yon, uh, Mr. Speaker, ang una ko pong ginawa ay maglabas sana ng isang pahayag sa media na mananawagan pa sana kay Presidente Duterte na "to exert all effort". At bago po yong pahayag na yon, nag-initiate akong tumawag sa opisina ng migrante international. At doon ko nalaman na nagpe-press conference na pala ang Department of Foreign Affairs na sinabing nabitay na. Kaya isa rin po ako sa nagulantang doon sa same day na mayroong pang-effort at uh, ang inilabas na naming pahayag ay kaugnay na nung pagkakabitay. Ang gusto ko lang po sanang itano sa ating kagalanggalang na kasamahan ano, dito sa kongreso, naniniwala po ba kayo na higit na vulnerable ang kababaihang OFW? Kapag sila po ay lumalabas para maghanap ng ikabubuhay?
My dear colleague, Kong Emmy, sobra po akong naniniwala. Tayo po magkasama sa China. Naalala niyo ba na ang sabi nilang Consul General? Maraming kababaihan na nakakulong, na nakasalang na sa death penalty. Pero po, walang nakikipag-ugnayan galing sa DFA, PEA, or OWA. Siguro po, alam naman ninyo na pagmalapit ng mahatulan, doon lang sila lahat tumikilos. Kaya po, marami po rin salamat sa iyong panunungkulang. Alam ko naman na matinding advocacy ng Gabriela regarding sa kababaihan all over the world. Kaya po, umaasa din po ako sa inyo na tayo'y magkakatulungan regarding the flight of our poor women all over the world.
Ang gusto ko lang pong bigyan din ng diin, uh, Mr. Speaker, Madam Congresswoman Tita Baby, ito pong vulnerability sa kasalukuyang panahon naman. Hindi naman ito bago and in fact, panahon pa ni floor contemplasyon sa rabalabagan. At marami pang kababaihan natin na naging biktima ng ibat-ibang anyo ng karasan. Hanggang ngayon, maraming iniuuwi ay nasa kabaong na. Pero naniniwala rin po ba ang ating, Mr. Speaker, na ang tulak talaga ng mga kababaihan ay dahil sa kawalan ng kanilang oportunidad na magtrabaho dito sa loob ng ating sariling bayan?
Ay totoo po yon, Mr. Speaker. Yon di naman po ang aking gusto sanang imong kahit pag kayo'y nanghangampanya, na bigyan natin silang even livelihood program na kayang-kaya po naman nating gawin dito kung tayo magkakaisa. Kamukha po nung 80,000 na nandoon po abroad. Eh, 10% are in shelters now, right now. Na gusto na rin pong umuwi, so ayaw na rin po nilang magtrabaho doon. Kaya nga po, hindi lang naman sweldo o pera ang kanilang habol. Ang gusto rin po naman nila makaroon sila ng dignity na makauwi man lang dito ng parang isang taong hindi isang pulubi na pumipila kagabi nasa television dahil sa walang makain.
Mr. Speaker, uh, ito po ang gusto kong bigyan ng pansin, lalong-lalo na sa kabila ng pagiging vulnerable ng ating mga kababaihan, 'yung forced for them to be forced to look for jobs abroad. Alam din natin na karamihan sa mga kababaihang lumalabas ay mga ina, mga nagmamahal at naghahangad ng kabutihan ng kanilang pamilya, pero ito po ay napipilitan. Ang gusto ko rin po sana at bigyan pansin, hindi magwawakas ang ating effort dito sa kongreso na pigilan lamang ang at ah, tanggalan ang karapatan ang mga bansa na tumanggap. Dahil kahit doon sa mga bansa na alam na nilang bawal, napipilitan pala pa ring lumabas. Kaya bilang huling bahagi, Mr. Speaker, uh, Madam Tita Baby, siguro higit na dapat nating bigyan pansin ay ang pagtitiyak na 'yung isinisigaw nung ating mga migrante, sana ay mabigyan buhay. Trabaho sa Pinas, hindi sa labas. Ibig sabihin po nito, hamon sa atin din ito, na paano ba natin titiyakin na magpapa-ulat tayo ng industriya? Tayo ay tutulong doon sa pagtitiyak ng reforma na ang mga kababayan natin ay hindi na magiging ah, mapipilitang lumabas ang bansa sa kabila ng mga nakaambang panganib. Kaya, uh, Mr. Speaker, uh, Madam Congresswoman, kinikilala ko po ang ating pagsisikap na sana maliban doon sa pagpaparusa sa mga nakagawa ng kasalanan sa ating mga kababayan, maging higit na mapagbantay tayo doon sa mga patakaran na lalong magpapahirap sa ating mga kababayan na sila ay mapapilitang lumabas ng bansa para tumulong sa paghanap buhay. So 'yun lamang po, Mr. Speaker, uh, Madam Congresswoman at kaisa niyo po ako sa laban na ito. Maraming salamat po.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, my honorable colleague, Tita.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, with no other members wishing to interpolate, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Rosemary Arenas and the interpolations to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend the privilege hour.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The privilege hour is suspended.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we call the roll of members.
There is a motion. The Secretary General is directed to call the roll.
Roll call of members, honorable representatives, Abad, Abaya, Abayon, Abiliyanoza, Abu, Abueg, Acharon, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adjong, Adbingula, Agarao, Agabao, Aglipay Bilyar, Albano, Alcala, Alejano, Almario, Almonte, Alontenagiac, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aragonés, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsensac, Aumentado, Bagau, Bagaching, Bagilac, Banal, Barbers, Barsaga, Batawil, Batucabe, Bautista Bandigan, Bilaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Cristoper, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Bilyones, Biron, Bulilia, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Meravida, Brosas, Bulut Pigtang, Kagas, Calderon, Calixto Rubiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Carri, Casilau, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fedinil, Katamco, Caetano, Celeste, Seravica, Siriles, Chavez, Chapeco, Co, Cuango, Culiantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cosalan, Crisologo, Cuah, Cuaresma, Cueva, Delipe, Dalog, Dasa, Jesus, De Vinesha, De Vera, Defensor, Delmar, Del Rosario, De Los Montalia, De Maporo Abdullah, De Maporo Khalid, Duavit, Durano, Di, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Rigel, Hermita Bohain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Giuseppe, Evardone, Pariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Feriol, Floirendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fentebelia, Garbin, Garcia Guendolin, Garcia Use, Garcia Albano, Gari Richard, Gari Sharon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Heron, Guana Cristina, Gomart, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Aurelio Dong, Gonzalez Fernando, Gorseta, Gulyas, Hernandez, Herrera Di, Hofer, Alusos, Javier, Co, Congun, Labad-Labad, Laxon, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Lasatin, Lia Chon, Lee, Limkay Chong, Lubrigat, Lopez Benhor, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuel, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magododato Suarto, Magododato Sanjeet, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariño, Marquez, Martinez, Matugas, Millana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nogralles Jerico, Nogralles Carlo, Nolasco, Núñez Malinyáon, Weminal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vini, Pacquiao, Paduano, Palma, Pancho. Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primicia Sagabas, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramiresato, Ramos, Relámpagos, Rivelia, Robopuno, Robes, Procomora, Rodríguez Isidro, Rodríguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque Harry, Roque Roelio, Saknalán, Sagarberia, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbagon, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sandoval, Santos Recto, Sarmiento César, Sarmiento Edgar, Sabiliano, Semah, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Swan Sigrilita, Swan Siguerracho, Suárez, Sielbarado, Tambuntín, Tanang Gilina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Tolintino, Treñas, Tugna, Tupas, Turabinataman, Ti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Hui Juliet, Hui Rolando, Hui Beretta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Villarde, Velasco, Velasco Caterra, Veloso, Vergara, Villapuerte, Villanueva, Villanaso Suárez, Villarica, Villarin, Vilago, Yap Arthur, Yap Melicio, Yap Victor, Yu, Samora Marcarmen, Samora Ronaldo, Sarate, Subiri.
Mr. Speaker, the roll call shows that 233 members responded to the call.
With 233 members responding to the call, the Chair declares the presence of a quorum. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, may we recognize the guests of Bagong Generación Partilis Representative Bernadette Herrera Di? The names are as follows: Barangay Captain Ryan Navero, Kagawad Hernán Aguirre, and Kagawad Adrian Saizon.
The guests of the Honorable Bernadette Herrera Di, nasan po, welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we resume the privilege hour.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, since the privilege hour has expired, I move that the privilege hour be extended for another hour to allow the gentleman from the 1st District of Samar to avail of the privilege hour.
There being no objection, the privilege hour is extended by 30 minutes.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we, that the gentleman from the 1st District of Samar, Honorable Representative Edgar Mary Sarmiento be recognized for his privileged speech.
The Honorable Representative Edgar Mary Sarmiento of the 1st District of Western Samar ay ginkikilala para magyakanan niya privilege.
Good afternoon, Mr. Speaker. Good afternoon, my dear colleagues. I rise on a matter of personal and collective privilege. I stand here not only as a member of this august body, but as a citizen of this republic that I love most. The news of the heinous kidnapping case of Korean national Ji Ik Ju and other Korean nationals allegedly perpetrated by police officers rocked the nation recently. I personally sympathize to the people of South Korea and the Korean-Filipino community for this very unfortunate event. Crime happens daily everywhere and this should not be. However, what should not happen at all is for a crime to be perpetrated by the protectors of the people and enforcers of the law themselves. I firmly believe that those involved in these cases do not represent our entire PNP. But with President Duterte himself believing that almost 40% of our police force are involved in activities that make them unworthy to be called protectors of the people, my question is, what do we do now? Quesco Todias Epsos Costodes, who will guard the guard themselves? When a law enforcement officer commits a crime against a foreigner, it is our dignity and the citizens of this land that is at stake. I am in support, Mr. Speaker, of the directive of President Rodrigo Duterte to momentarily halt the campaign against drugs and for PNP to focus first on cleansing its ranks. The PNP chief disbanded the AIDG today to give way to new command that will weed out the police involved in the drug trade. This is an opportune, this is an opportunity for the PNP and perhaps with the help of our legislature to see what reorganization is needed in streamlining with good deeds as their intention, the operation of our different drug agencies including the PIDEA, the Dangerous Drugs Board, the PNP, and the NBI. May I also call on the Internal Affairs Service and the National Police Commission to strengthen, to strengthen the resolve in taking decisive action against hearing police officers. They should do it now, Mr. Speaker. We have no need for police officer who does not have the heart to serve their duty. Those who do not live according to the core values of being pro-country and pro-people. I am pleading, Mr. Speaker, and hoping that what I am saying today will resonate with those who are tasked to enforce the laws and protect the people. Please, I am pleading, bring back the Filipinos' trust and respect to all of you members of the Philippine National Police. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you so much, my dear colleagues. Good afternoon.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of Honorable Sarmiento to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Mr. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adjourn session until tomorrow, January 31, 2017. 4 o'clock in the afternoon.
There is a motion to withdraw?
Mr. Speaker, I withdraw that. I move for a few minutes suspension.
Session is suspended. Session is suspended, Majority Leader. Before you proceed, Majority Leader, the members are advised to please listen to the Majority Leader. Go ahead, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we terminate the privilege hour.
Hearing no objection, the privilege hour is terminated. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adjourn session and resume tomorrow, January 31, at 4:00 PM.
Unless there is an objection from Congressman Rudito Albano, hearing none, motion is granted. Session is adjourned until tomorrow, 4:00 PM.